Okay, I would like to call the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, Special City Council Meeting. Door, roll call please.
John Coleman.
Here.
Kim Prepper.
Here.
David Henson.
Here.
Ronnie Maynes.
Here.
Jason Payne.
Here.
Jenna Smith.
It's gonna take a little while.
Okay. Good packed house today, thank you for coming. Please make sure you signed in on your way in. I think I saw a few people not, so if you could do that, it would be greatly appreciated. And then we'll stand and Counselor Payne, would you lead us in a prayer and say the prayers will leave us?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this evening. We just thank you so much for all of this, being able to come here safely tonight and pray, bless our time together. You just made me pray.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, could we see? Okay, so we have a couple announcements. Let's get started with those and you can't hear.
Speak up please, cause it's difficult to hear out here.
Okay.
We just have to speak up because of the rain.
Hello.
I'll try to speak louder. All right, a few announcements, is that better? Okay, so look at these announcements done first. There is a ribbon cutting at Basswood Class, eleven AM, grand reopening downtown Williamstown on Saturday. It's the only woman's boutique shop in Williamstown, and so I would encourage everyone to go check that out. We also have Derby dash five K starting on May third, which is Derby Day, eight thirty AM. And it's right at this, in the parking lot here, they'll start. And please encourage those who would like to come. The next announcements, and this is to the council. At the right now, I am the mayor of the Williamstown, city of Williamstown until next Monday, May fifth. However, I will be out of town next week on a pre-planned vacation that was scheduled months ago. Before you is a request to continue to affirm me as mayor until the twenty first of May, as we will have scheduled a meeting on the twentieth. After the twenty first, the governor will have to appoint a mayor, because that's in the statute, after the thirty days. There is an alternative to appoint me or someone else as of today to fill the unexpired term of the past mayor until December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Should the council tonight feel comfortable with me as your, in the city's mayor, I would be honored if you did so with a motion second involved a majority, however, is that the discretion of this council?
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. David Henson as our mayor to fill out the remainder term of the current term that is here that would expire December the thirty first of twenty twenty six. Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. A little bit different when I conduct the meetings, I'll ask for discussion at this point. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
John Coleman.
Yes.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
Ronnie Maynes.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, consider it an honor, and I appreciate it. The next order of business regarding our city attorney. So I have spoken to Frank Winchman from Winchman Associates and explained to Frank that we as a city will, are going in a different direction and his services are no longer required. We had a big phone call, I believe, and that is done. I will like to recommend that we hire McBray Law Firm out of Lexington. And those of you on the council are familiar with McBray Law Firm as our new city attorneys. And I would like to take a motion for that.
I make that motion, Mayor, that we hire McBray Law Firm out of Lexington to be our new city representative legally?
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Payne. Any discussion on the motion?
With a potential appeal from the former mayor, should we hire and fire anybody? Cause if we, if Mark was to win, then we, everything gets voided, right? Is that what we're still?
At the right now, I am the mayor of the city and we are the council, we're making city decisions business. You know, I, at this point myself cannot concern myself with the appeal.
Gotcha.
So that's why.
I was just asking.
Yeah, that's a good question, I'm sure there was other. Any other discussions?
They're still saying that they can't hear.
Oh.
Wow.
Are the mics on? How do you check what's happening?
He told me they're on.
I just sent her a message.
Yeah, we, we can't hear you.
You can't hear, I'll?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, there is a motion and a second to hire McBray Law Firm. We've gone through a discussion, roll call please.
John Coleman.
Yes.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
Ronnie Maynes.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Please, okay. Frank, we thank you for you serving us through the town and appreciate what you have done for us.
Can I make a few comments?
Of course you can.
Evening everybody. As you know, my tenure as city attorney has only been for what, sixteen months? So relatively short time in my profession. It's been an exciting time and I've enjoyed every moment, I appreciate it. Other than negotiation and litigation, I've always thought of my job as a city attorney in regard to the mayor and city council is to advise you on what you can do legally, what you cannot do legally. And I'm pretty confident that I've done that to the best of my ability. You all, the mayor has decided that he wants to go in a different direction, that's his prerogative.
Even those who don't like chicken.
Well, I can't control the mic. I'm sorry if you can't hear, I'm speaking as loudly as I can.
So my phone went off.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, the mayor has decided to go in a different direction, I appreciate that, it's his prerogative. I'm disappointed in him obviously, but given his decision, certainly wouldn't benefit him or me to continue as a city attorney, so I'd like to formally submit my resignation.
Thank you Frank.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you Matt.
Thank you.
Tom.
Thank you Frank.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, appreciate it.
By the way, if I could ever be in service in the future, don't hesitate to call me.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask Addison O'Ree from the McBray Law Firm to please come up and sit at the council table. Next, I'll be joined at Mayor's.
Hey Mayor. Could you move my name?
You don't look like Frank. I have a couple more announcements actually. So some of the things that I've been discovering, can you hear me? We have a vacancy for the Board of Adjustment for the town of Williamstown that I'd like everyone to possibly think about, we're looking for someone to be on that board. At the right now, we do not have a quorum for that board. If you have, if you're interested, please call the mayor's office and we'll get you the information and let you know what's going on. I also was told we are absent a county board of assessment person that sits on the county board to represent Williamstown. And again, if you're interested in that or know, or want more information, please feel free to call the mayor's office and I'll be glad to go over it with you. Mayor's update, so before I give an update to the council, I would like to address the audience and those who are listening, I know some people are watching, and I just want to address a little bit to you. First of all, those of you who don't know me, my name is David Henson. I've been on the council for just about a year and ran for reelection this past November. So I've been on here a short time, so I don't know everybody in the field. I realize there has been a lot of chaos over the past few months, and I believe we have taken the correct steps in rightening the ship. I understand there has been a lot of emotions surrounding the recent situation that has brought us to this moment, which I certainly understand from both sides and from everybody. It is my desire to earn the trust of the citizens of Williamstown by conducting myself with integrity, honesty, and transparency. It will be my goal as we head into this year and next year to bring back the stability and confidence in town government that everyone deserves and desires. I have worked in the hospitality industry all my life, retiring in March of twenty two, and have lived in Williamstown for approximately eight years, my wife and my son. We have grown to like this city and enjoy the community. We have also been fortunate to make some, make some very good friends. We owned a business in Grant County up until last June, and I chose to get involved in this city after retiring as a way to give back to the community, and as simple as that. There's a lot of questions is why is he doing this? I'm, I'm here to give back to the community and I have the time and I believe the ability to do so. I am confident that you will find, although we may not always agree, I will always do what I believe is in the best interest of the taxpayers and the families of Williamstown. I encourage everyone who is listening to email or call me for any appointment and ask questions. If I do not know the answers, I will do my best to find them and give back to you. I will always try, I will always get back to you and I will always try to get you the answer that you've asked, and I will be as transparent, I will be very transparent as possible. And I, and I hope that they hear from each and every one of you at one time. So now to the council, I'd like to address a few things that just in the past week that I'd like to follow through and let you know. One of the first businesses that I feel and have felt was necessary was to get an understanding as to where we are at financially. With that in mind, we have hired an independent firm to do an internal forensic audit, and we'll get that, I'll talk more about that later in the agenda. But we have contacted someone, and actually she was working today. Even before the new firm was hired, we were unable, we were able to uncover a few things. We found that revenue that had been received by the city has not been properly allocated to the department or line item that it was meant for. This was a huge salary when it goes to salary and wages lines for areas with all appropriate taxes and retirement and pensions. So in other words, money that came into the city was not being allocated or distributed to the proper department, it was just going into a general fund. So it's hard to do a budget and it's hard to move along when you don't know the money, where it is. Now I believe the money, I believe we have the money we're supposed to have. I'm not telling you that for sure right now, but it looks that way. I have, I have checked every account that this city has and I'm going through every number. There are still some revenue that is out there that has not come in. For instance, the franchise tax fees and the big one is the bourbon barrel tax. Those bills did not go out until February. They were supposed to go out sometime between late October, early November. So we sent them out in February and they get so long to return that, to give their check. Now, the check is due now, so we're hoping to receive that money very soon. That is approximately four hundred thousand dollars that is out there. There was some, there was a lot of unwarranted and unauthorized overtime, which that in itself has, has hurt certain departments in the city. And again, not knowing the salaries and the wages, because they were never put on the budget tractor, tracker that we received, nobody knew that that was the case until recently when we finally were able to put the numbers into the line items. So there are some departments who are gonna overrun their line item budget for salaries, and now the council here will have to do with that, deal with that. And I have some options that we can go over. As we continue to struggle with the staffing, due to some of our longest tenured and critical position city employees retiring, we are trying to pull all these pieces of puzzles together and get an understanding as to where we are. As we now prepare to put together budgets for the city, and I will also tell you, we are approximately six to eight weeks behind the budget process. We should have started this process up to two months ago. And we still are in a little bit of a pickle since we do not know where all the money is as far as on the line item budgets. So it's hard for the department heads to go ahead and start working on it when they're not sure not sure if the numbers that they're seeing are correct. Am I correct, Chief? So, but we are getting closer and closer on that and we feel good that that will soon be solved. This process, we should have started weeks, if not months ago, cannot be completed until we have all the correct data and the correct line items. That being said, I have spoken with Laura McLannahan, who as you know is our former zoning and And she is coming in part-time on a temporary basis to assist myself in some of these projects and some of these areas to get us back on track. We had just downed bodies. A few of our duties will include providing assistance to the office of mayor on various government topics, the writing and training of writing grants. As you know, as any of you who have been here in the past few meetings, grants are something that are out there for us. We have not taken advantage of that for one reason or the other and it's something that I feel we, it's a, it's a prerog, it's a priority and it will be going forward. Provide assistance in reviewing employment applications received for the position of city clerk, treasurer, office meaning manager, and zoning administrator, as well as assisting with interviews, pre-employment requirements, and new employee orientations. Personal policy is, the personnel policy is in need of being updated in order to be compliant with current personnel law. She will provide assistance in contacting and scheduling entity to assist with the, with this update and will assist mayor and city council in getting this task completed. One of our issues is if you, if you go and you look into the, say, the job descriptions as someone comes in, they have been copied and copied and copied. There is no, it's not a Word document. That's how old they are. They were done sometime in the 90s. So we can't go in there and edit on Word or in the computer and they're out of date. So one of the priorities we're going to have going forward is to update job descriptions and get, get them published into the personnel policy books so everybody has them. So there's a lot to do administratively as well as financially. Just briefly, as I came into, to the office, you know, some of the things I saw were, you know, POs not signed. There was one PO from February that was not signed. There must have been 28 sitting on my desk on Tuesday morning. We have caught them up and we've matched others with the budget, so we feel good about There are, there were a couple department heads, interim department heads who were not being paid the same as their predecessors were. As you know, this council has discussed that several times. That has been taken care of. They are all being paid retroactively to when they started. When it comes to the budget process, I have met with almost every department head now. Probably will finish it up tomorrow or the next day. We've met, we've given them the most updated budget tracker. We've given them the 2425 budget. They had to take that information. When I do come back for my pre-planned vacation, we will sit down with the city clerk, myself, the department head, and we will go line by line item and start inputting the data for the budget for 2526. After, when that is complete, we'll start scheduling workshops with the council so the council can go over and review what's done and make your decisions. So those are all priorities. Another priority that we've had is just the look of the city and some of the maintenance that's been neglected. This building, all the lights were not working outside. They have not been all repaired or replaced. The lighting on the bridge as you go into Williamstown, half the lights are out. Joe has made it a priority. He's already started working on it. Those lights should be working in the very near future, if not already. I don't know if it's complete yet, but it will be very soon. If you look in back of the old town hall, the old courthouse, excuse me, that parking lot that the city owns was, was a mess and there were trucks, there were cars parked in there, flat tires, there was, I saw two boats, just little boat, paddle boats sitting in there, trash. We've gotten rid of most of it. We sent everybody a nuisance registered letter to move their, move their property or have it towed out of there. I went by there yesterday. I only saw the big box truck left, so we'll take care of that coming up. And then Derek is going to get the, all the grass that's there that's overgrown and it's hard to mow because of the way the situation is. We're going to dig that out, put some river rock in there and just make it look a lot better. It looks better already. I noticed that yesterday. And this is just a peeve of mine. As you walk, as you drive into this lot, if you notice that granite sign that describes the building itself, the Williamstown building, it's been missing letters for over a year. I mean, cause I've been on the council a year and they were missing the day I started. They are now, they have been ordered and they will also be put in place very soon. One of the things I've asked Derek to do is to, you know, mulch around here to keep the, I mean, if people come into our town, it's a reflection on us, on how the town looks and I, I believe that. And so we are going to have an emphasis on that. He's been down to the Web Park already, did landscaping there. The bathrooms need work, painting and other things. Same thing with Splash Park, which is about to be opened. Again, needs, it needed, Tim has done a lot, painting and repairing. So a lot of this stuff we're working on as fast as we can. I want to talk a little bit about zebra mussels. So we've put a plan in together and we are, we basically put it into three phases. One phase, the first phase, and we've talked to a couple experts. Tim talked to somebody today. He gave me the information just as I came in, but we, we are going to take care of the water intake lines first, first and foremost, because that's where they're coming in and hitting the pumps and the intake and literally putting our equipment at risk, our pumps. So we're going to take this chemical called Earth Tech or maybe Promaginate, Promaginate, P-R-O-M-A-G-I-N-A-T-E. They're both chemicals. They both have proven to work. Earth Tech has already been approved by the state of Kentucky to use. We have not got approval for the other one yet. It's used in many water plants for this precise, this precise reason. And so either one could be used. We're probably going with Earth Tech, but it's not been decided yet. We anticipating this to be completed in three weeks. The next piece would be the pumps and it's a specific pump and then they're buried underwater. Some of them are 30 feet down. The first and foremost thing, we have to get a dive team, go down. We have to blow away the mud and clean the mud off these pumps, get the zebra mussels off these pumps. It's a hard job and it's something that we have to contract a dive team. Perhaps Grant County Dive Team itself may assist us with this, but we anticipating that would take us a four-week project. Then of course, we're at the design and creation of the screens for the, when the, when the water comes in. Now, keep in mind, even with the screens, it will not stop the zebra mussels from coming in because the screens are bigger than the small zebra mussels, but it'll keep the large ones out. And this again, further protects the pump and the equipment of the water department. We have contacted a firm to, we've had, contacted two and we will have up to three firms bidding or coming down and looking at our, our system. They bring their own engineer with them and they will assess, they will give us a estimate as far as how much the project costs. That in itself will cost thousands of dollars just to get that estimate, which we're, we're going to, we're going to have to do. And then we will come back to this council and decide to appropriate money. Now, one of the companies we spoke with tonight also is a, they're experts at getting grants themselves. They will go out and get their grants to repair. So we will further go that, go that way. We are anticipating, we need six weeks for the engineering firms to come and give us a scope of work and at that point we will come back to the council to actually start the work on the screens. You know, assuming we had the money and get the money, we're talking, you know, by fall. So it, it will take a little bit of time. Priority right now is to protect the motors and the propellers. So, but the screens with the, will keep the large zebra mussels from coming in and protect the proposed propellers of the motors. Another thing I wanted to update the council on, I don't know, I didn't know, so I'm assuming you may, may not have known. The city of Williamstown is involved in a class action suit. We are plaintiffs. It's a $15 billion lawsuit against 3M and DuPont. I'll give you the Reader's Digest version. It's regarding a chemical called PFOS that is in our lake water. And PFOS is the material that is used on non-stick pans or some sportswear, Nike sportswear that help you not to perspire or whatever, has PFOS in it. And it gets into the lakes and the, into the waterways and it's a, it's a chemical and it's, they were sued, we were part of it. We are going to get something from this settlement. They don't know what it is yet and they don't know when, but it's, it's a kind of a big deal. I'm going back and forth with a gentleman who I, he's asked me for a bunch of information as to expenses, like one of the expense that we had was, we had to buy a tank of carbon because when the PFOS is there, we need the carbon to filter through before it gets to the drinking, gets drunk. That's, that in itself was $82,000. We should get that back and we're about to buy another one because we're running low. So we're hoping to get reimbursed on both of them, plus, plus more. But more to come on that as we go. Those of you, we were recently fined by the EPA and, at our sewer department and that was waiting on my desk when I came on Tuesday. I have not signed it yet. They had to wait until the vote today till I became appointed and not interim. Once I sign that document, we have 30 days to respond to this complaint. Now, we have sent the check already and they have not cashed it and they will not cash it until we address the concerns that they have and put in writing as to how we will prevent that from happening in the future. So that is a lengthy process. Mark and I, Miller and I are working on that and we will get that done, but that clock starts today.
How much was the fine?
The original fine was $18,000 and it was negotiated down to $14,000.
What was the non-compliant?
I'm sorry?
What was the non-compliant?
You know, I, I don't know offhand. It's, it's like that thick and I have not gone through it all yet. I want, I want to commend Derek for really cleaning up the area around the grounds. I want to commend the entire team, the superintendents have all been very, very receptive and they've all been, you know, asking what they can do to help and it's, it's been a pleasure so That's all I have for updates. Any questions coming?
I got a question.
Could you come to the podium, state your name, please?
At the beginning, you talked about bringing Laura back part-time. Can you explain that how many hours is part-time? And my, my concern is you don't have a handle on the budget yet, so can we actually have the money?
We do. Just with past clerks and past, and Laura being one of them and it's been one or other, one or two others that happened and that money has not been used for months. So yes, to answer your questions, and she's only going to be working two days a week.
Two days a week? For how long? Is it rest?
No, no, it's just, it's very temporary.
What is temporary, temporary?
I, I don't know, but it's weeks, not months. Sure. State your name.
It's Denise Alpheld, and I live in Grant County, not Williamstown, but I do have a question. Can I still address?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your update. It was very informational and I appreciate that. The one thing I do have to address and ask because it was brought up at the hearing that I attended and I look forward to your tenure as mayor is that two names were brought up at that hearing. The clerk, Alex Cummings, and the former chief, or chief, chief lobby. Will you, as the mayor and the council, be addressing those two former city employees for their potential fraudulent activity? I did not hear you at your update. I do not know, hang on, I wasn't finished. I did not know if those were true or not true, but will you guys be investigating that?
I, I can tell you this and we'll get to this in just a minute. We are going to do a forensic audit. When that audit is complete, whatever we find, we find. And if, should there be anything irregular, we will absolutely further it.
Okay. I appreciate that because even though it was pointed out that the former mayor, mayor may not have signed documents, he should not have signed. It over time was issued to an employee and it was issued in error, that employee took it. They should not have taken it. They should have contacted the mayor and said, I got paid in error. And if he didn't respond, he should have contacted you.
I appreciate that very much.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Before you, you will find, we, Lisa, and I want to commend Lisa right now. She, the minutes which were not published since the first of the year, January, she has gone back and you have before you the minutes from January 1 to our last meeting. So they are here. She emailed, I think, most if not all of them last night. I am not sure if you had time to go through them all. I certainly can appreciate it if you have not. If you'd like to table the, the sentence of the minutes until you have a chance to read and go over it till next meeting, I certainly would understand. It was the pleasure of the council. Those were edited. They, they were already, we already had a meeting and then to approve, we had some changes. The changes were made.
I feel like it's a good idea to table them. I feel like it's a good idea to table them so that we have time to go through them thoroughly, but whatever, if I have to consult.
Yes. Okay, if there are motion?
I'll make that motion to table them.
Till the next meeting?
Next meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion to table the minutes to the next council meeting? Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Tom Coleman?
Yes.
Tim Prepper?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Kane?
Yes.
Okay, so going back to old business, this council, on several occasions, voted and discussed hiring a independent firm to do a forensic audit from our, from our city clerk's office, beginning July 1st of 24 to present. And this desired action was never taken upon or executed. I have met with Tammy Bowman with ETA Investments and have hired her firm to do just that. She has started already. She is a certified forensic expert. She is a certified fraud examiner. She is an enrolled agent with the Internal Revenue Service, license obtained May 2016. She is considered a court expert when it comes to forensic auditing and investigation. This is someone who I thought we should have hired a long time ago. It will take time and it'll be her and there are one or two other assistants that will be helping. It'll take six to eight weeks and I'm throwing that out there and I ask not to be held too close to it. But it'll take some time to get through everything. She is going to go through all the revenue that has come in, that should have come in, that didn't, or did, making sure ledges are up to date and she will let us know if there are any irregularities in her findings. If there is, we will pursue that, you have my word. But we will, we can't know that until we, we know that. The reason why I have pushed and the reason why I wanted a independent firm was that I believe someone with outside, who is outside of the town with fresh eyes, someone who has no skin in the game, to come and give a fresh look as to what's going on. And I believe she is the right person to hire her firm and we will, we will stop. And as I do get updates, I will make sure everybody is aware. Questions on that discussion? Frank, John?
How far back are you planning on going?
I'm going back to July 1. Now, I know, I try to stay off social media, especially since a week ago, okay? That being said, I know there's a call for a 15-year audit. That probably will not happen. I can tell you, we get audited every year by Paul Maddox, that's the audit company, a firm. Now, do they do a specific detailed forensic? I don't believe they do. They give, they, and this is just from what I have experienced in my life, they are only as good as the information that you give them, okay? These yearly audits. So if you give them this information, they're going to take that information and give you these results. That is why I have asked for an independent firm, because they will not go by any information. They will seek out the information themselves and they will deliver. To your question, John, should it be warranted to go back for any reason because we find irregularities that say we should? Absolutely. We'll go back as far as we need to. But right now, that's the scope and that's, I believe is fair. Anyone else? Let's talk about the Marina Fuel Line bid. We appreciate your patience and we know it's been a long haul. So one of, one of the last few things that Frank did, he's, he wrote the bid solicitation for the repairs. In that, and again, for the record, I will not be here next week meeting, but the meeting will go on because we're apparently opening the bids at 6:00 PM next week at the council meeting. This is ways written in the newspaper and everywhere, where the bids will be open. So whoever's running the council meeting at that time will have that enjoyment. And at that point, the council can accept, reject the bid. I recommend we make sure that Brooke and Mark have, are aware, I'm sure you'll be here, you'll see them. And that's that. Any questions? Mark?
I know two companies has the bids in hand.
Yeah, one company, yeah, one company called us and said, can I use the same bid that I put in last time? I said, no, they would have to resubmit. So all, all the bids you get will be sealed and from there. And at that point, the council decide to accept a sell and I'm, I would, you know, hope that we would rely on Brooke and Mark's expertise on that to assert, to project, to us, to a certain extent. Discussion, questions?
How's construction going there?
We had some more lumber delivered yesterday and he started welding the handle iron onto the post. Hopefully he starts doing some framing this week.
Have you all officially opened yet or not?
May 16.
May 16.
Yeah, we won't, I don't see having availability of that.
Just a little more patience and we'll get this done. Next, so we have kicked around for a while, I know a few, quite a while regarding the second meeting of the month for this body. And the third Tuesday has always been, Frank? The third Tuesday has always been a special meeting. And when you have a special meeting, folks, it means we cannot add one thing to the agenda, right? And we have to stick to the agenda and there's been some conversations back and forth in some of these council meetings as to exactly what that means. So to make things a little easier for this council, I, and I think a lot of you have also approached me and talked about it, we set up a proposed ordinance, this would be the first reading, to designate the third Tuesday of each month as a regular Williamstown council meeting instead of a special meeting. So both meetings in each month will be regular meetings and have that capability. That being said, I'd ask Addison to read the, just in scope, yep?
Ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance of the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending section 31.31, in quotes, meetings of the City of Williamstown Code of Ordinances and ordinance 2019-02, and hereby setting monthly regular meetings on the first Monday of each month and the third Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM and special meetings as needed at 6:00 PM prevailing time.
Is there a motion on the floor? Do we, do we need, we don't need a motion. Okay, that's the first reading. And then next week, you could, we'll do a second, second reading and at that point it will become a law. Okay, we have a, Chief Collins is here to talk to us about consideration of approval of resolution, which does not need a, it just needs one vote, correct? Amending the interlocal agreement for the Kentucky Unified Police Standards of Operating Procedures. Chief?
Okay, this program, it's called the Bluegrass Central Protective Unified Police Protection System. We just call it backups. Basically, it started in Georgetown and it is a memorandum of understanding, also like an interlocal agreement. Basically, it gives us jurisdiction and arrest powers in other places that also agree with this. So we can't just go make arrests and do all that in other places, we have to inform them. But if we have a case here where our suspect or anything's in another area that is also in this agreement, we can notify them, we can go there, arrest them and get them back here rather than waiting all the time for them to be able to go get them. Basically, it just gives us more arrest powers and jurisdiction in other areas. They have their own standard operating procedures that we also have to follow, they have their own board. They decide if we get in or out, if we violate anything, we are removed from the program, everything like that.
Questions? What other cities and towns around that involve?
Cities and towns, that would be my sheet I gave you guys today, the very back of all that. See all the ones that Dave has given me so far? City of Clay City, you got Cynthia, Daniel, Frankfurt, Georgetown, Harrisburg, La Grange, Mike Nash, Big Wasburg, St. Mel's Sterling, Nickelstone, Owensson, Harris, St. Andrew Station, Mercedes, Littlemore, Winchester, Anderson, Anderson County Sheriff, Grove County Sheriff, County Bourbon, County Wood, Wood County Sheriff, Carroll County, Hard County, Franklin County, Allison, Roar, Grant, Jessamine, Harrison, Hard.
No. My, yeah, my point is it's, it's almost throughout the state. I think it's a great, it's a great.
Basically, it's us having the state police powers as a city. But we should have noted on the form of the area.
Need a motion? Can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have, who made it, Friday, Councilman Maine, motion and Councilman Coleman, second. Any discussion on the motion? You have Coleman?
Tom Coleman?
Yes.
Tim Prepper?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Kane?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's leave some passes. All right, we have one last thing and we want to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by?
Sorry.
Councilman Coleman?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Tom Coleman?
Yes.
Tim Prepper?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Kane?
Yes.
Jason.
Hey, thank you all for coming, much appreciated.